Great time when they raise their hand, they'll be allowed to to come in and speak. So we'll, we'll talk about that later. Okay, um, I think everyone's here. Are we missing anybody? Okay, okay Gina, I guess we can start.
Okay. So the closing and sealing of the executive session minutes?
Yes.
I recommend, recommend that minutes pertaining to an individual's job performance, the assistant superintendent evaluation goals. And the superintendent, just the assistant superintendent right now, remain closed.
So moved.
And a second, Mr. Luzon made the motion, Mr. Callahan seconded to the minutes pertaining to the executive session, missing pertaining to job performance assistant superintendent goals remain sealed. Those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you.
I recommend that minutes pertaining to an individual's job performance, the superintendent evaluation goals remain sealed.
So moved.
Mrs. Luzon made the motion, Mr. Callahan seconded that the, that the minutes pertaining to individual jobs performance superintendent evaluation goals remain sealed. Those in favor? That's also unanimous. Thank you.
I recommend that minutes pertaining to collective bargaining, NEA ESP negotiation update remain sealed until such time as an agreement has been reached.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Luzon made the motion, Mr. Callahan seconded that the minutes pertaining to the collective bargaining remain sealed. Those in favor? That's another. Anybody abstaining or? That, okay, so everyone raised their hand. So that's, that's unanimous. Number four.
I recommended that minutes related to the privacy of students and their records, approval of home instruction requests remain sealed.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Luzon and Mr. Callahan. Mr. Luzon made the motion, Mr. Callahan seconded that the minutes related to the privacy of students and records remain sealed. Those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? Abstaining, the recusals? So that's unanimous also. Miss Catherine's disclosure executive session minutes, please.
Thank you. We had four votes in executive session. The first was executive session minutes of March 23rd. In favor, Callahan, Day, Juicy, Luzon, Lyle, McAllister, and Stall abstaining Chambers. The next vote was memorandum of agreement with the Charahoe District and the Charahoe ESP in favor Abbott, Callahan, Chambers, Day, Juicy, Luzon, Lyle, McAroot, I'm sorry, McAllister, and Stall. Next foot were home instruction requests in favor Abbott, Callahan, Chambers, Day, Juicy, Luzon, Lyle, McAllister, and Stall. And finally, to return to open session in favor Abbott, Callahan, Chambers, Day, Juicy, Luzon, Lyle, McAllister, and Stall. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Juicy. Thank you very much. We'll go on to number, room number five, recognition.
Hey, please join me in recognizing the following students and accolades. Middle school student Caitlin Callahan placed second middle school portion of the contest. And, and in the Lindsay Ann Burke Memorial Fund Dating Violence Poster Contest. Our high school students Nate Berry and Spencer Shields on their nominations for the Rhode Island Interscholastic League Scholar Athlete Award. Grade 10 students Michaela Mogavero, hers was the one, she was one of two winning stories and Emma Willis. Notable story placed in the top 10 in the Rhode Island Competition. Grade 11 student Isaiah Plank was state runner-up in this year's English Speaking Union National Shakespeare Competition. And grade 10 student Virginia Keister Keister won the Rhode Island Arts Council 2021 Poetry Out Loud Recitation Contest. Congratulations, everyone.
Thank you. Congratulations to all. Next, we go on to public forum, room number six. I'd like to just take a few minutes. We're in a new format as probably our attendees can see. We are using a webinar form, format. You can see and hear all of us. We can see you as attendees. We can see your names. So at this point in time, if you look at the bottom, there should be a raise hand icon. So if you wish to speak during public forum, you have to use that raise your hand icon or Gina, remind me, what's the star for the people on the phone?
Should be star six.
Star six. So if you're on a phone line, you can do star six and you would also be able to I'd be able to see your hand raised and I'd be able to recognize you and then you would have the opportunity to speak. So at this point in time, is there anyone who'd like to speak on any matter that's not on the agenda? That's where we are right now with public forum. So if you do hit the, I have one person, attendee, okay. Lisa Tuck and then Kimberly Daigle. Lisa, you have your hand raised? I have to let you in. Just give me a minute. Oh, boy. Why isn't this working?
I did it, Linda.
Oh, you did it. Okay, thank you. Okay, Lisa, you have, could you please state your name and what town you're from? There she is. Hi, Lisa. Could you unmute yourself?
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Yeah, I'm Lisa Tuck from Ashway Elementary School.
Yes, Lisa.
Um, well, I'm a certified nurse teacher over at Ashway Elementary School, so I also teach health there and I'm the school nurse. And I just felt it was important to speak about the last school committee meeting and the discussion about yoga being used in the schools and some talk as well about meditation and mindfulness. And I know there was a majority vote to get rid of the word yoga anyway from the curriculum. And I did write a letter to the school committee about this and so you probably are aware, but I'm mainly just disappointed that it went to avoid a vote without the people present who are, you know, educated in its practices and in teaching them. We weren't aware that this was going to come up or be voted on and we certainly would have been present to provide the necessary information, I think, to support that they really need to stay as part of our lesson planning. And, you know, I really do understand and empathize with some people who feel it's part of a religion or that it teaches spirituality that their religion isn't comfortable with. I truly authentically get that concern and I appreciate that and the passion that, you know, drove it toward the meeting, but I'd just like to request that it's put back on the agenda so that some time can be given to it sometime soon for those of us who would like to reassure and to present the facts that spirituality is in no way part of the use of these tools and to educate about the way that they are used at school and seems like there's a big misperception and I'm wondering if it doesn't have to do with the rabbit holes that web searches can be. Anyway, it's understandable, but I worry that the fear is based on a false sense of what it really is. And I think we should have the opportunity to present the science behind it now more than ever since the district is focusing, you know, on mental health. And I think it's a lot of misunderstanding and that better open communication would remedy it for everybody. And so I'm just asking that the teachers and clinicians who are educated in it and use the practice, practices regularly can be heard and speak on why we need the tools, how they're taught and how they're not. So that everyone can feel safe and comfortable and the students can get the best education.
Thank you, Ms. Tuck, for your, your comments. Thank you very much. That would be taken into consideration. Thank you. I get it. Let's. My, it's my, my thing is not working, Gina. So could you give me a hand? Could you? Thanks. Next person that's up is Kimberly Daigle. Oh, maybe because I'm not the co-host.
Yeah, you had to be made co-host.
Okay, that's why it's not working. Okay. Um, okay, Ms. Daigle? Could you unmute yourself and introduce yourself, please? I don't, Ms. Daigle, did you want to speak? She's.
Okay.
Oh, there you are. Okay.
Is that working? I hit unmute and it kicked me out. So I.
Okay, no, you're fine now.
Okay.
A few minutes to speak and then.
Sure, thank you. I am physical, one of the physical education teachers at Richmond Elementary and much like Lisa Tuck am concerned about the fact that the yoga content was taken out of the physical education curriculum much without consideration or conversation with the professionals, not only physical education teachers, but the clinicians and the school psychologists, the best behavioral management specialists who do utilize these practices within the school, not only the phys ed curriculum, however, with all of the students throughout the school day. I apologize, I just written something quick and small, but I do appreciate the time that was put into the phys ed curriculum by my colleagues and I do believe that much of what the content is, is utilized completely for not religious purposes, but for exercising strength. And yoga is a perfect, it's perfect in a COVID space environment, much of which we had a lot of difficulty with early on, especially in the school year, however, we still are. And it allowed us space in order to provide quality phys ed experience. And yoga does meet four out of the five physical fitness components that we work with, with the students, which I think are extremely important, not only physically, but it also has a lot of mental components as well that we utilize to support our students. It's physical and mental proponents change what we call it. I, I really think that's doing a disservice not only to our regular ed students. One of our adapted PE teachers had made mention that he uses it a lot with our special education population. They're used to a if we take that vocabulary away, we change it, we modify it. We're doing our students a huge disservice when they go back out into the regular world. They take courses at the YMCA or a yoga studio. They know this, they know the poses, they know different things, they know what it does, but they don't relate to it because they're not privy to us calling it what it is. We don't utilize it for anything other than strength and in a community where I feel as though we're really working hard to provide our students with opportunities and to reach out and to find things that really work for them. Not everybody is an athlete. I, I don't want to see those things taken away from them and I really would like for us to revisit it in a topic and maybe modify some of the ways that we utilize it. I also think futuristically, if we just abandon the conversation, that it's going to be very difficult to bring professionals into a system that doesn't utilize mindfulness and yoga. It's going to be difficult to bring in teachers, clinicians, BMAs, when they are expected to provide a progressive evidence-based method that is proven to work when we have so many students who are struggling right now and acting out. And I would really, I, I just really think it would be so sad if we lose something that has proven to help our students. I appreciate your time.
No, thank you very much. Then that would be, your, your comments will be taken into consideration.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, any other comments from the attendees? I don't see any of the hands, so. Spoke too soon. Mr. Chip Hale, you are. Would you please introduce yourself and what town you're from, please?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chip Hale. I'm from Ashway and I apologize, I, I wasn't on the last meeting, but I just, with respect to the last comments about a vote being taken on a topic that at least the previous two speakers were not aware of. If, if it wasn't an agenda item that a potential vote was going to be taken, it seems like that could potentially have violated the Open Meetings Act or law or whatever. So again, I, I, I don't know. I, I wasn't able to attend. I didn't see the agenda for the last meeting, but I would just raise that as a potential. The, the reason that, you know, as all you know, we put things on the agenda. And in fact, just at the most recent anti-racism task force, the lawyer explicitly went through three items that were particularly relevant to the Open Meeting Act and one of them was sticking, and once you make an agenda, you need to stick to it. So so that, that's all I wanted to say. Again, I don't, I don't know what the was, but that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to item. Thank you very much, all who participated. Let's move on to policy. Ms., Ms.
I just want to say I'm unable to place.
Yeah, I was trying to get him back into the room, but I can't. It's not working.
Eric, can you just see if you have the function? Because I, I had it and now it's not there.
What are you trying to do?
We, we move, make the him, chip back to an attendee.
He, he is still an attendee.
Oh, then how was he able to talk?
Oh, so after someone talks, you can go back into the, into the attendees list, click on more and then remove permission to talk.
Okay.
That was different than I had.
Yeah.
Chair, there was another hand up?
Oh, um, okay. I see it. Thank you, Mr. Luzon. Thea Brennan, please state your name and where you're from.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, sorry, I can't see myself, so this is weird.
That's okay. You can turn your video on.
I don't see a button for it, just the mute.
Okay, well, we can hear you. That's fine.
My name's Thea Brennan. I am a Richmond resident and parent. Um, my question was just seconding what the gentleman before me said. I had reviewed the agenda from the last school committee meeting. I did see an agenda item for mindfulness and also for the PE curriculum, but I didn't see anything about in particular yoga. And I guess just my, I did write to school committee members. My question is, I understand and respect where the concern about yoga as a religion is coming from and why some people want it removed from the curriculum. But my, I guess, question and concern is my child comes home with Bible vacation school. Fires twice a year from school. Bible study was held at the Richmond Elementary School. So I guess my question is if we're talking about removing language for religious purposes, why these things are also shared within the school community? So that's just my only question for thought moving forward.
That's, it's a good question for thought and I appreciate it. Thank you very much for sharing.
Thank you.
Okay, and. Okay, so we can now move on to item number seven, which is policy.
So this is the procedure for registering objections to requesting reconsideration of curriculum materials revision. I recommend approval of the revisions to this policy, which will be renamed objections to requesting reconsideration, reconsideration of curriculum materials. And this has been reviewed by legal counsel.
So moved.
And a second by, there was a motion made by Ms. Luzon and seconded by Donna Chambers to approve this new policy renamed requesting consideration of curriculum materials revision. Okay, so now I'm opening it to discussion and question. Mr. Stall, you have your hand raised? You have the floor, sir?
Thank you, Chair. I liked, I liked a lot of the revisions to the policy that, that simplify it. And also because it was extremely outdated, we've taken away things like records and cassettes and things like that, which is probably good. I also like that it, it utilizes the district curriculum planning council and the assistant superintendent really clearly, so we know who the people are that, that the, the process is going through. I also like that it shortened some of the timeframes so that it, it gets this issue moved through the process in a more timely way. So those were the things that I really liked about the revision of the curriculum. One thing that I'm, I'm not sure that I love, and I'd love for those who did the revision to speak to it right in the, the very beginning, the top line of the policy. We've, we've gone from students, their parents, guardians, residents, or employees. Basically, all the stakeholders being able to object to a curriculum piece to just the parent or guardian of a student or a student that's over 18. I like any or all of the stakeholders being able to speak into the, the, the curriculum at the school. So I don't like that change. And I'd like to see it go back to the language it was before where any of the stakeholders. But I'm certainly willing to hear the reasoning for the revision by the people that made the revision to say, what, what, what's the justification for that or the reasoning for that? And if I don't vote for it, I won't keep belaboring discussion. If I don't vote for it, it's because I didn't like that, that, that change. The other question I have is toward the end of the, the process, step number seven. If the concerned party is not in agreement with the committee's decisions, an appeal can be made to the superintendent, and this is the new part, at level two of the district's appeal policy. And I don't know what level two of the district's appeal policy is, and unless I'm missing it, I don't see it here. And that's a new addition, but, but then we don't know what it is. So it sort of says refer to this other process or this other step, and then we don't have it here. So could, could you help me out with that too? What is that? Where is that? Is that new or revised or was that existing? And where is it? Help me. I'd like some help on that one.
Thank you, Mr. Stall. Ms. Bacard or, or Mr. Anderson? I don't, Ms. Bacard, you want to speak to Mr. Stall's question?
First line, actually, there was a lot of dialogue and the biggest concern was the efficiencies of the, of us to be able to meet the need if every member of every town who didn't have a child asked to go through every book or every material, it would, it would bring the district to a screeching halt. So the concern was how would we manage the business of the district if, if that's a possibility? So it was moved to parents, guardians of any student. Because obviously employees, we have the DCPC, we have, we have a stage of way, a way that teachers already do that work. So it was more about that, that efficiency that, that's why the employees came out because there's already a way for them to do that. And to get their feedback and input into curriculum. And it was just, we, so really, because we already had a way for teachers to do that, it was more about the residents. And then the question was, if you had, if you did not have a child in the school system, you were making decisions and again, you could ask us to go through every single item and not have any party of concern in, in a school. But I'll let John, if John, you want to add anything, but that was.
No, I think that the superintendent has explained this. First of all, let me explain to the school committee that this is the most liberal policy that I am aware of in the state of Rhode Island. Under state law, the only things that you have a right to exempt of are dissecting, one is dissecting frogs. And the other is sex education. Those are the two areas in state law that a parent can say, I don't want my kid to participate. And the school has to make alternative arrangements. The Charahoe policy as presented goes far beyond what state law says. As the superintendent indicated with regard to the first revision, basically, one person could take every single book in the Charahoe curriculum and a day at a time send in a form letter for each book and basically it would shut the school department down. In our legal system, there is a rule called standing. And that is, is I can't sue on behalf of somebody else. I have to sue based on my own concerns. And this way that the policy has been amended is if it's affecting your child, absolutely, you can raise the issue. But if you're simply, you know, trying to impose your views on somebody else's child, then no, you don't have standing. With regard to the second question that was asked, the school district has had a appeals policy. It is on the school district's website. We have had it on place probably for close to 10 years. It applies to all appeals. And basically, with regard to all appeals, it sets a process that ultimately leads to the superintendent and from the superintendent to the school committee. And all this is making it clear to the public that there is an appeals policy that if they are dissatisfied, that they can move into. We do not have one appeal for discipline and one appeal for curriculum. And, you know, you're going to knock three times on the ceiling if you're upset about fundraising and you got to, you know, hop three times if you're concerned about this. We have one standard appeal system across the board and while this is making reference to it, it is available and has been available probably for eight to 10 years on our website.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Ms. Juicy, you had your hand up. Would you please?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
One of my questions was how far reaching is this policy? In other words, I can understand that if, if I have a ninth grader and they're doing Romeo and Juliet, which has some really heavy themes and I'm not comfortable with that. I can, my child learning about that, I can go through this process. But does this mean my kid picks up a book in the library and I don't like that that book is in the library? And then I can appeal the process. The, the library books this way too, I guess. Is this just for curriculum and things that are used as it relates to curriculum? Or is this for any book that we have on campus?
If you look in the first paragraph, it refers to educational materials, so it refers to anything.
Okay.
So it is far, I think to answer your question, Catherine, it sounds like it is.
It's a universal policy.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions, discussions? No. So we've had, we have a motion and a second to approve this policy as written. Those in favor? We have. Okay, and those opposed? Mr. Stall, I believe I see your hand up. Thank you, sir. And any upset abstentions or recusals? I do not see any. So Dawn, I don't know if you saw that. It's everyone approved except for Mr. Stall, who did not. He opposed the, the new policy as written. Thank you very much. Now we're on to business.
So this is the transfer of student activity funds from the main field concession stand account to the Mattie Potts Foundation Fieldhouse account. So the Charahoe Sports Boosters are requesting that the student activity funds earmarked for the main field concession stand be transferred to the Mattie Potts Foundation Fieldhouse account as the concession stand will now be incorporated in the field house. The funds are totaling $25,125.11 were moved from dormant student activity fund accounts to the main field concession stand account per the recommendation of former superintendent Mary Ritchie and subsequent approval by the school committee on March 14th, 2017. Therefore, I recommend approval of the transfer of these funds.
So moved.
Ms. Luzon and Mr. Callahan, there was a motion made by Ms. Luzon, a second by Mr. Callahan. And now we're open for discussion or questions. Mr. Luzon and then Ms., Ms. Chambers. Mr. Luzon, you have the floor?
So Gina, I don't know if you're familiar. I don't, maybe North Providence, they, they did something similar, but years ago, the post-grad party was very popular. Are we officially never going back to that again?
I would never say never.
Does that have to do, I'm sorry, Ms. Luzon, how does that, can you please make, make me understand why that has to do with the student activity fund? I'm trying to stay on topic.
It's number 213. It's of the first category.
Oh, is it one of the, is it one of the dead smiles or one of the, okay, I see.
It's actually half of it. I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to say let's not do this.
Okay.
Want to make sure that once we shift that money over, we're, you know, two years from now, we don't have the post-grad party and they're starting from scratch. So I'm just, that's my.
Good point. I'm sorry. And that's a good point. It's a good question. It's anybody, I, how were those, how were those accounts?
That's all I can say.
Yeah. Were those accounts chosen because they were dead accounts? They hadn't been used in a number of years?
It says they were dormant. So I, Ned, I don't know if you want to add.
Yes, this happened in 2017. Those funds were already removed.
Okay.
They were dormant accounts that weren't used and that's why all of that backup. They were dormant accounts that weren't used, and that's why all of that backup material was included. To show that Barry made the recommendation. And the school committee approved all of those accounts being moved to the concession stand in twenty seventeen.
Okay, and so what we're doing.
To move any funds other than what had already been put in the main concession stand.
Okay, understand, thank you, Donna, thank you for clarifying that. Um, I, there was someone else who had their hand, oh Donna, Chambers, you have your hand raised.
I um, yeah, that's, I was there and Donna, that was a good clarify clarifying comment. Um, we approved it, but if if these um are dormant, like for example, the chess club. Back to Craig's point, does if it if there, do we have it, still have a chess club, first of all? Do we still have a science club?
I, uh, Mr. McKenzie, I believe is an attendee.
Yeah, he he actually had his hand up, yeah. I'll make him a a panelist. Okay, Mr. McKenzie, you're you're now a panelist.
So great to have control over my video.
I'm still learning, Mr. McKenzie.
But I was very confused by the format when I came in, I was couldn't tell, I was.
You were the only person in the meeting, yeah.
Well, anyway, um, yeah, we went through every single SAF fund, looked at accounts, looked at things that weren't moving over the course of. Really, the multiple years prior to that decision and then after. And I think a lot of it was primed towards trying to do a renovation of um the concession stand. And obviously, the field houses is a uh exponential growth on that goal in terms of how we redirected those funds. And when there's opportunities for clubs to resuscitate, uh, the chess club is an example of something that's been dormant. Uh, for, I'd say, four years. Um, and the idea is that we have the wherewithal to regrow. And we've got resources that were developed as a part of that club when it was active. But in in the absence of that, the idea was to uh consolidate essentially dormant funds. And try to direct them towards something that would positively impact students and the school community.
But, excuse me, um, Craig, you're saying that if.
I see you, Mr. How? No, Mr. Mr. Day had his hand up.
I'm sorry, but I just wanted to follow up with that question.
Okay.
Okay, just if there if there is going to be a chess club, again, they can get access to funds without having to raise their own money.
Uh, no, I think I I would say more that 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 fun, like like many of the other clubs and organizations that were dormant for a number of years. Those funds were just sitting there and in the absence of that, we want to try to find ways to support students as best we can. Just like any other club, they'll have the opportunity to fundraise, uh, you know, to regrow.
Excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt, but we are not on topic.
No.
This has nothing to do with the dormant accounts. It has to do with money that's in the field, uh, the concession stand. It has the dormant accounts done in twenty seventeen.
Correct.
They were, that's why I want to.
The dormant accounts now.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Donna, thank you for getting us back on track. Uh, Mr. Day, you have your hand up.
And I was gonna, I was gonna mention the same thing that uh.
Thank you.
Uh, she said, the five of the members uh sitting here tonight voted. On March sixteenth to move these over. And all we're doing tonight is to take it, that money has been moved over and putting it in the Matty Potts Potts Memorial Fund. So I I, you know, these people voted for it and now that now two years later, three years later, they're they're questioning what they voted on.
Right. Great, thank you very much, Mr. Day. So the the motion on on the floor right now is to move the um the funds to the Matty Potts account. So that's our, that's our task. So there was a motion and a second. Um, if there's not any other discussion, um, I'd like to take this to a vote. Um, those in favor? Okay, any opposed? Any recusals or abstentions? No, looks like that was unanimous, thank you, Donna. And thank you, team. Okay, uh, letter B. Superintendent, it was presentation by the Attorney General's Office pertaining to training of law enforcement in regards to bias and prejudice.
Yes, so um, I just promoted Keith Hoffman, so Keith is here from the Attorney General's Office. He actually also attended our anti-racism task force for a a different um conversation. But um, the Attorney General's Office has been involved in training law enforcement um for over twenty-five years regarding prejudice and bias. So he's just going to speak to the committee about what that work looks like and um sort of give a lens of how this work has already existed in our community through the lens of the uh police. Welcome, Keith.
Hi, can you see me and hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks so much uh for inviting me here tonight. Uh, my name is Keith Hoffman. And I am a Special Assistant Attorney General um in the Rhode Island Attorney General's Office. And um, in that role, I I do a couple of different things. Uh, I sometimes defend uh cases when the state is sued. Um, and then I also am on the Attorney General's uh civil rights team. Um, so we prosecute violations of the state's uh hate crimes laws. Police misconduct cases, um, and then uh other civil rights related um cases. And so I joined the AG's office about three years ago. And um, I I became the civil rights uh advocate soon after that. And um, I went to my first training. Um, down at the Police Academy, Municipal Police Academy. For uh civil rights and hate crime related issues. And I go down, it's like eight o'clock in the morning. And I showed up and I learned that this training had been going on for as as the superintendent said, something like twenty-five uh years. Um, and it and this training had had always been at the Police Academy, a full day training focused really on. On a uh civil rights issues, hate crime issues. Um, diversity, uh, the importance of diversity in our communities, the importance of understanding diversity in our communities. Um, and and as part of that of that series, uh, as part of that um training. Um, there were, there have always been folks from the community who come and and tell their stories. And so that first day that I that I went to the training. Um, there were two just really, I thought, excellent community speakers. One was um, a man who who was a refugee from the Gambia. Who talks about his experience with law enforcement in his country. Um, in his country, law enforcement um were really kind of tools of a dictator. Um, and so for for him and and other refugees like him. Um, you know, the experience in in dealing with law enforcement is a lot more. Uh, uh, challenging, uh, can be really kind of traumatizing, it can be really scared. And so um, you know, he helps the recruits, the police recruits to kind of. Um, you know, realize what how other people may view them. And I remember what he said that morning was, he said, I come into, I came into this room this morning and, you know. You're all um in shaved head, you've got shaved heads and you're wearing big boots. Um, and black clothes, and in my country, I think that you were going to kill me. Um, I would be terrified of you. Now, you know, in his country. Um, you know, that's what, that's what some police officers did. They were, they were, uh, they were tools of the uh of of any of a really bad dictator. Um, and his experience with law enforcement in this country has not been that way at all in Rhode Island. He said he's been always treated with respect by police. Um, in part because, you know, we we do trainings like this where officers learn. Uh, you know, how to see things through other people's eyes. Um, which is just such an an essential uh piece of policing. The the second person who spoke that day. Um, was uh a a trans woman who spoke about her um, her uh experiences with law enforcement as well. Um, and how um, the first time that she'd been pulled over by a police officer. Um, with her, you know, uh, uh, as a woman, uh, as she was transitioning. Um, and and how terrified she was um when she handed the police officer her um ID. Uh, and the name didn't, you know, it was a, it was a man's name on the ID. And not knowing how that police officer would react. And how thankful she was when the police officer treated her with respect. And called her by, you know, her chosen um gender pronoun. Um, you know, one of the, one of the great things about this training, and now I've done these trainings dozens of times uh for the. Both recruits and now and now active police officers as well. You know, we always just open it up and people ask questions and anything's on the table. And it's just so important, especially for the recruits, I mean, these are young people. And, you know, the idea is anything goes, you can ask any of those questions, get them off your chest, things you might be wondering. That you want to ask somebody who's from the Gambia and has had a completely different life experience from you. Somebody who, you know, uh, has uh is trans and and has had a completely different experience with with law enforcement, really with life. Um, than you and and, you know, there's always so much respect um in those conversations from uh the police recruits. I'm always just so, so impressed. And so this training, um, you know, it's kind of uh a little bit groundbreaking. A lot of other states have have moved toward doing this sort of thing, but Rhode Island was really um. Pretty much breaking ground and doing this sort of statewide training. Um, and uh, over the years, it's gotten to be um. Pretty uh, pretty popular. And so we were getting a lot of requests in from um police departments to to bring the training into the police departments. Because, you know, there was an understanding particularly among uh among the police officers that, you know. Um, we wanted to enhance those skills uh in active officers, just as we're enhancing those skills of. You know, and seeing things from other people's perspective, basically, in the police recruits. And so we started doing this, but we realized that there are just too many police departments in the state, too many police officers really to do a really good job at this. And so that was when we set up the um hate crimes and civil rights liaison officer program, which actually just. Um, we just rolled it out um in December of this year. It's a totally voluntary program. Uh, police departments can name a hate crimes civil rights liaison officer to um, you know, serve as a point of contact for our office for hate crimes and civil rights issues. But then also to get that um training annually, once a year. Um, on, you know, uh, important issues that are facing, you know, our diverse communities in Rhode Island. Um, and even though this program was totally voluntary for the for the police departments in the state. Um, we just a few weeks ago um hit a a really important mark, every police department in the state. For every city in town, um, even like the airport police and university police and environmental police, state police. Every police department has named a hate crimes civil rights liaison officer to participate in this training and this program. Um, and I think that that's just a recognition of where we are as a state. You know, one of the things that's always been mentioned um in this training. Um, is that Rhode Island was was actually founded um as a as a colony, you know, in a different way than a lot of other places. And and the history of Rhode Island has not always been um, you know, positive with regard to religion and immigration and race. You know, there's been bad stuff, there's been good stuff, but we were originally founded as a place of tolerance. And I think that it's really uh cool to see Rhode Island kind of continuing that. Um, that leadership with the training to the police recruits that's been around for a really long time. Um, this new liaison officer program that that's off to a really good start again because of of where our law enforcement community is on this issue. Um, so anyway, uh, Superintendent Bacard just asked me to come and speak a little bit about that. I'm happy to answer any questions about it. Um, and uh, and, you know, just just wanted to uh put my support behind, um, you know, initiatives that are gonna help. People in communities across the state see things in a new way, in a different way, from other people's perspective and and. And and kind of show respect for our diverse communities in the state, thanks.
Thank you, Keith, very much. Um, Ms. Mac Russo and Mr. Callahan, Ms. Mac Russo, you have your hand raised, you have the floor.
Hi, Keith, thank you so much for being here um this evening and um thank you for the time you spent with the anti-racism task force um last week as well. Um, my question um pertaining to the training of law enforcement um in regards to bias and prejudices around online posts. And I was wondering if you could tell the community a little bit about how you support law enforcement or train them to discern. Between online posts of free speech and cyber harassment of a racial bias or prejudice nature.
Sure, so um, it's a good question, it it the the answer um. Can get a little bit long-winded if we have to go into the constitutional law that's at issue. Um, I spoke a little bit about this at the Anti-Racism Subcommittee, um, I think it was last week. Um, and I don't, maybe I went into too much detail um there, but I can.
Yes, if I could, let's give the the, we're we're all working very um hard to be more um. Inclusive with our language, with our community. If you could give it the non-legal.
Legal, the non-legal.
Layperson, community explanation between online posts of free speech.
Yes.
Cyber harassment and how you help law enforcement, right, because that's the topic. How you help them discern, because as you know, we've got outstanding um police chiefs in in law enforcement in.
Yes, yes.
But tell us a little bit about that, thank you.
Okay, sure, so. At the outset, I think the most important thing to to understand here is that there are um biased incidents, which at their nature are legal. Even though they're harmful and offensive to a person or a community. And then there are crimes that are um sometimes biased motivated or not, um, you know, involving speech on the internet. Um, and I think that before we even get to the crime stuff, it's just really important to note that. Bias incidents, while not criminal, can be really harmful to people and really distressing. And harassing to some people. And, you know, even if as law enforcement, we can't do anything to um. You you know, we can't prosecute anybody for it. You know, certainly, we want to foster a community where people can not be um targeted with any sort of. Inflammatory, you know, um, uh, kind of hateful stuff. So that's the first thing, even those biased incidents, we can't prosecute people for it, but we certainly don't condone it. And the reason why, um, you know, we can't uh, uh, you know, prosecute crimes, uh, prosecute incidents that are simply biased motivated. That don't rise to the level of a crime is, of course, the First Amendment. So the Attorney General's um job in this area is to help police departments figure out when a. If we're talking about internet posting, um, when a comment kind of crosses that line and is no longer protected speech under the First Amendment. So it can be complicated. We, uh, you know, often have to research these issues pretty thoroughly to figure out whether a certain um. Post or comment or whatever crosses that line um and is not protected speech and and becomes cyber stalking or cyber harassment or something else. And, you know, I just, I think it's important to know that we're really vigilant in this. Police departments um frequently bring us uh police reports of um letters, internet postings. Speech from sidewalks that um sometimes is harmful and offensive, but protected under the First Amendment, sometimes it's not. So that the basic role is that can, police departments are going to take police reports. They are um going to bring them to us and we are going to determine, you know, whether they could, whether the uh underlying action can be prosecuted. We also, if the Attorney General's Office have an online complaint form. I certainly um recommend that anybody who who um faces any issue in this area, fill out the online complaint form. Um, generally, what we're going to do when an online online complaint comes in is we're going to reach out to the local police department. Um, and see if further investigation needs to be done. Um, but but it's a really good resource out there um for people who may feel that they're being targeted um with with unlawful. Um, uh, speech or, you know, bullying or harassment or stalking online.
That is a wonderful answer, thank you very much. Um, Keith, could you just state the website for um the record, because we don't have a chat. So anybody that wants to do the recording and and know the the website and the form you're referring to, if you could just state that and then I'll um yield my time to Ryan.
Sure, so the the website address is really long, but if you just Google Rhode Island Attorney General's Office. Um, and and click on the link for the Rhode Island Attorney General. The Civil Rights um tab is on the left side of the screen, on the home screen. You can also just go to R I A G dot R I dot gov and again, navigate to the complaint form. Um, that's the easiest way to get there.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Mac Russo, uh, Mr. Callahan, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Chair, I have I have two questions. The first is for for Keith and then the second one's actually for Superintendent Bacard. Uh, so Keith, thanks for uh giving us your time tonight, appreciate that, sir. Uh, what I'm curious about is, yeah, what data does the Attorney General's Office collect to actually measure success of programs? That you're putting police officers through, especially programs uh on bias and prejudice? I'd be interested to see. I'd be interested to see how you measure the success of, of the work that's going into it and how it impacts the, the community.
Sure. It's a really good question and I'm, I'm mindful of the fact that I guess I'm in front of a lot of educators who are probably a lot better, you know, know a lot more about educational tracking than I do. We do have a like standard form that we ask the recruits or officers to fill out, following a train to like assess the impact of the training, what areas they thought were helpful, what they learned, what areas were not helpful. We've cut things from the training, we've added things to the training in response to that. The community speakers that I spoke about before are, are actually always like the most popular pieces of, of the training. We've cut some videos lately. People don't seem to like the videos or think that they're very helpful. We've, we've talked about adding additional tracking mechanisms, like maybe doing a questionnaire beforehand with some questions and then a thing afterward, a questionnaire afterward where we can see like, oh, people certainly learned this much during the training. We're always trying to balance though, you know, how difficult it is to collect that data, to how much time we're taking for people. We, we try to make these trainings, you know, as quick as we can, understanding how much training officers do need to go through. And so we, we don't want to overburden them with that. I hope that that kind of answers your question. We're, we're doing our best to track it, but there's probably, we are considering some improvements in that area.
Okay. No, I, I appreciate that. What I would recommend would be that if there's a specific bias or some specific social interaction between police and communities that they're policing, that the AG has identified and is targeting through the bias program or prejudice training, however, that there's some sort of analytics to track success. I mean, I think that that would help craft it rather than the, the return just kind of questionnaire from the, the people who went through it. But I thank you for your answer on that. Superintendent Picard, I am unsure why this is on our agenda. I have no legal control or authority over police or anything that they do. I, I'm sure there's a reason. I, I'm sure there's a reason. I'm just simply, could you dial me in here? What, what am I supposed to be taking away from this that I can then apply to my, my role as a school committee member?
As the school committee had started the task force in August, the Anti-Racism Task Force, one of the things that would be helpful is to see how already Rhode Island is working with the police, a community as it's one of our most revered resources, to be able to say this work is already existing in this and, and with this group being the police departments. So we thought it was a way to sort of make a connection with the community to say that it's not just happening in our schools, but also within our community law enforcement, that, that this is training that's been ongoing for 25 years.
Understood. Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that. And I thank you for your time again, Mr. Hoffman, for being with us tonight.
Mr. Stahl, you have the floor.
Yeah, I, I wanted to share the same question that Ryan had, but I'm, I'm, I'm still sort of unsure of the connection. I appreciate also the work of Keith Hoffman and, and the Attorney General's Office. I thought that his presentation was really good in the Anti-Racism Task Course meeting. I think it was really helpful there to help their conversation and inform their conversation. And so I thought it was really good and he was able to go into, as he said, much more in depth on the, on the speech parts and the, and, and how the dialogue happens and what's appropriated and not and all. I think that was really helpful there. But in the context of us, you know, sort of struggling and fighting for time and priority on the school committee agenda, I don't know, I don't know what we do with this in terms of school. We're talking about community policing and attorney generals and policing. I, I don't understand how it's a, a school committee function. I still don't. So I'd love more clarification on that. If a better answer to Ryan's question, I guess I have the same question.
Donna, Ms. Chambers, do you have a comment?
Unless Gina, you want to respond to David? I don't know that. But anyway, I think anytime as educators that we can be reminded of the reasons why our state was founded and based on tolerance and every time we can remind, be reminded ourselves, but remember to remind the, the students as well, is an opportunity for all of us to learn. Thank you.
So yeah, and just to continue to Donna's point, I think it's important, you know, we have a criminal justice program in our CTC, we're, we're, we're getting ready. We have, our SRO is a Charroh graduate. So our students are definitely, one of our work is that global citizenship. So we work hand in hand with all of our police departments and we very much value their service and support and they have been truly supportive. So really it was, it was just a, a time to be able to say that, you know, we're not alone in the work and I think it's good when our community, and if, if that was not necessarily the take of the committee, my apologies, but we did think that it would be useful to be able to see how other organizations, employees were able to sort of, that this work is ongoing and it, and it's, it's versatile, it's flexible based on the context. So I hope that, you know, Keith, you did a great job, but that was really what our thinking was, that it was, it would allow us to see that we are partners within this work in our community, along with law enforcement. As one way that there's training is obviously, you know, we get into health and services and nurses, but it was just one lens.
Thank you, Ms., thank you, Ms. Picard. And thank you, Mr. Hoffman, for your time tonight. Really appreciate your attention. Thank you.
Thanks for having us. Thanks.
Okay, Ms. Picard, we're on to letter C, please, in business.
So this is our revised 2021, 2022 school calendar for next school year. I am recommending approval for the revisions of that calendar as follows. New teacher orientation was moved from August 30th to August 26th. Staff orientation was moved from August 31st to August 30th. And our first district PD was moved to September 1st, which was, has been changed from the September 27th date. September 2nd will be the first day of school for students and the first state PD day was moved from September 2nd to September 29th. And that isn't aligned with the RIDE calendar. That is an asynchronous distance learning day. All the state PD days are asynchronous. And then there will be no school for students and staff on September 6th, no school for students on September 7th. And the holiday recess will begin on December 23rd to align with the state calendar and sending distance calendars. And these changes will not affect the required 171 days for seniors on the last day of school, which is Friday, June 17th, 2022. And I know one of the things I think is important to know, we've been capturing data from across the state about who's starting before or after Labor Day. More than half of the districts are starting before Labor Day. The districts close by to us being, you know, North Kingstown, I think there's West Greenwich as examples, but there are several, more than half of the districts are starting before Labor Day, in case anyone had that question.
So moved.
There's been a motion and a second by Donna Chambers to approve the revised 2021, 22 school calendar. I'm not opening up for questions or comments. Mr. Callahan, you have your hand raised, sir.
Thanks. Sorry, Gina, just to clarify, so we tabled this last time, there was some, I, I guess misalignment with RIDE or with an agency that was claiming that there had been some adjustments. So is this calendar the, the RIDE calendar or are we deviating?
So that, that's interesting. RIDE did not take a stance on the, the Jewish holidays, which was the,
Okay.
you all received from the Jewish Alliance. They basically left it up to LEAs. They just noted which days those would be. But if you, and that was the question we had, because it, it looked like in the email that the information that we received said RIDE has now changed that, but when you go to their state calendar, they still have counting those days as school days and they're counting those part of the 180. So based on the conversation with the, like I said, other districts from around, our, our take was to do the calendar as presented. So we went with the line with the one day. And then obviously, as you know, for any religious holiday, our staff and or our students can, can request the observance be excused. But this helps with the, the issue being more about the first day of school not being the seventh or eighth due to Rosh Hashanah.
Okay. So I guess the follow-up on that is that we, as a school committee, have taken positions in the past that we do not effectively take holidays for religious holidays. We take those days off when staffing becomes a problem on those days. Is staffing going to be a problem on these days?
On the, you're speaking about the September 7th? That's, that's a change. Based on the review from Krista Merritt, it would not be a problem on that day.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Mr. Abbott, you had your hand raised. Do you have the floor, sir?
I'll be voting against this because I was opposed to removing the names of traditional holidays from the calendar. I think it's a stupid thing to do and basically that's how I feel and I'll be voting against it.
Thank you, Mr. Abbott, for your comments. Are there any other questions, concerns or discussions with regards to the calendar as proposed? I don't see any other hands raised, so I'm moving this to a vote. Those in favor of the new revised 2021, 22 school calendar, please raise your hand. Aye. Those opposed? And that's Mr. Abbott. Those abstaining? And Mr., Mr. Stahl is abstaining. Thank you, Mr. Stahl, Mr. Abbott and the rest of you for voting. I don't think there's any recusals I should ask, but I don't, I think everyone was accounted for. So, okay, thank you. That's item C. Now we're moving on to item D.
So this is for the facility use during COVID-19. So in October 2020, I recommended and the school committee approved that during the pandemic, and with state requirements for social distancing, the facilities not be available for rent to outside groups. The reasons for my recommendation were gyms were currently being used as classrooms, which is sometimes still the case. Storage areas, undue burden on our custodial staff and the unbudgeted expense for extensive cleaning of the buildings after usage by others, concerns of spread of COVID-19. And I feel right now we are at the point where the, the state is beginning to open up some of the guidance and has begun, is starting to move forward on spring guidance. So with that in mind, you know, pending additional guidance that we allow the use of our facilities contingent upon submission and approval to the group's COVID plan and as long as it doesn't have any additional concerns in the buildings if they are using them as classrooms. As an as-needed basis.
Okay. There was, thank you, Mr. Luzon. There was a motion to change, I guess, our previous so that we would allow the gyms to be used on, on approval from the administration, seconded by Mr. Callahan. Open for discussion. Any questions, Mr. Luzon?
Yes, Johnny, you still with us?
I am.
So the way this is worded, and it, and it states the, the last part of the, the entire statement, approval of the group's COVID plan. Should that legally mirror ours?
I'm sorry. I, I, I'm sorry. Sorry, Craig. Can you, can you repeat the question?
Okay. This statement ends by saying contingent upon submission and approval of the group's COVID plan. In parentheses, buildings and grounds. Should any group that wishes to rent space from us, should their plan mirror ours? Their COVID plan, should it be the same as ours? Or are they allowed to have a different one?
Sure. It should conform with ours in the sense that, to the extent that, you know, our plan has specific requirements. It needs to be consistent with what we have.
So should we be saying that?
We can.
Okay. I know some other, did anybody else have another question? I have an additional question.
No, but that's a good point, Mr. Luzon.
So, so Madam Chair, I, I'd make a want to add to this motion that we amend it by stating that their COVID plan should.
Well, we have to close the first one first. We, don't we? No, we don't. Thank you, Mr. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Luzon.
So I, I'm amending it that any group renting from us, leasing space, that their COVID plan be similar as John, however John worded it.
They conform to.
COVID plan.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Callahan. A motion was made by Ms. Luzon to, to amend the policy, to have the word conformed to our policy, COVID policy. And it was seconded by Mr. Callahan. Any more discussion on that? Any other questions? No, it doesn't appear to be. So I'll take that to a vote. Those in favor of the policy as amended by.
The amendment.
Amendment. Thank you, Mr. Luzon. Those opposed? Any? No, I don't see any opposition. A recusal or abstentions? No, don't see that either. Okay. So the policy passed. Oh, so the policy's been approved. Thank you.
No. Madam Chair.
I'm sorry.
No, we, the amendment's been approved. Now we have to approve the amended policy.
Okay. Thank you. So who wants to make a motion to? You already did it. Okay, second. And now we'll, any discussion on that? Sorry. Yes, Donna.
Yes. Can we read the motion as amended, please?
Okay.
All right.
Did anyone take?
Yes, I have it.
Thank you, Donna.
Let me just go back here. It is to to allow use of our facilities contingent upon submission and approval of the group's COVID plan. With any group renting or leasing from us, their plan must conform to our COVID plan.
Donna? Is that good? Okay, thank you. Anyone have any other questions on the, the verbiage? No, now I take, now I can take a vote. Thank you. Those in favor of the amended, thanks. Those opposed? Don't see any opposition. A recusal, abstention, please. No, none of that. Okay. So now that, that is closed. Thank you so much and thank you for your help, though, your guidance. I appreciate it. Okay, now we're on to letter E.
So this is the, the resolution for expressing support for the state reimbursement of transportation services costs for public and private school pupils. Bill H. 6030. I recommend approval of this resolution, which was reviewed by legal counsel.
So moved, so moved, so moved.
And it was seconded by Mr. Callahan. So, so moved, so moved by Ms. Luzon, seconded by Mr. Callahan to approve, to recommend the approval of the resolution. Open for discussion, questions, any comments? Yes, Mr. Luzon?
I, I'm, I'm just going to add to this. I'm so glad you did this, Gina. At the end of the meeting, I'm going to request a future agenda item in relationship to this. But you know what? I've been on the committee, I think it's 11 years now, and, and it seems like every year there's, there's always a fight. I, I just want to throw that out there. I'll elaborate more towards the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Luzon. Any other questions, comments with regards to this agenda item? Okay, I'll take it to a vote. Those in favor of approval of the resolution? Okay, anybody opposed? Mr. Day, you're opposed? I'm sorry, I, I can't hear you, Mr. Day. Please, did I miss, did you want to have a comment or say something?
I was just voting a little, little late. I'm in favor.
Okay, that's okay. That's okay. Having one of those nights myself. So, um, so Mr., okay, so any, anybody against? No, a recusal or abstention? No, so that was unanimous. So the resolution was approved. Thank you so much. Letter F.
Okay, this is the memorandum of agreement between the Charroh Regional School District and the Charroh Education Support Professionals Regarding the Overtime List, Article 7.5. I recommend approval of the MOA, which has been reviewed by legal counsel.
So moved.
There was a recommend, recommend approval of the MOA, which was and then seconded by Mr. Callahan. Motion was made by Mr., Ms. Luzon, seconded by Mr. Callahan. This is now open for discussion or questions? Anybody? I don't see any hands raised, so I'll move it to a vote. Those in favor of approving the MOA, please raise your hand. Thank you for raising your hand. Anybody opposing? No opposition, any recusal or abstention? No, that's unanimous also. Thank you so much. No, that's unanimous also. Thank you so much. Letter G.
This is commitment of assigned COVID funds. So I recommend approval for the reassignment of the COVID related funds in the amount of $1,415,615 to the capital fund member town contribution for use in FY21 and FY22 for the purpose of funding our capital projects, five-year capital plan, and on necessity for school construction costs per allocations approved by the school committee and the RIDE housing aid submission requirements. This is aligned with the budget that we presented.
So moved.
Second, there was a motion made to approve the reassignment of the COVID-19 related funds, the amount of $1,415,600. Never mind, whatever that money is, one and a half million dollars to the capital fund. It was seconded by Mr. Callahan. This is open for discussion or question. Mr. Abbott has his hand raised. Mr. Abbott, you have the floor?
Could you explain if any of this money is going towards the newer and fewer effort?
It would be the same amount that was stated in the budget, the approximation of the 250,000.
Okay, that's fine. That's all I want to know. Thank you.
You want to add anything?
No, that was, that was the same answer.
Okay, any other, any other clarifications or questions? I don't see any. Okay, well, I'll close that, close that and take a vote. So the vote in front of you is to recommend for approval of reassignment of the COVID related funds. Those in favor? And anyone opposed? Mr. Day is opposed. Any recusals or abstentions? No. Okay, so the vote was passed with one opposed. Okay, so on to consent agenda items.
I assume we need to pull A1, A2?
Yes, I would agree with that, Mr. Luzon. Any other, anything else want to be pulled for discussion? Yes, Mr. Luzon?
Okay, so before I move the remainder, I would like, Donna, do we have any other additional donations that are not reflective in what we have here?
That is all.
Okay, so Madam Chair, I would make a motion to move the remainder. But before I do, I would like to recognize donation from Ocean State Job Lot Regional Office from Mark Perlman, principal owner and CEO of hand sanitizer, disinfectant wipes, and face shields totaling $24,000 to the Charahoe School District.
That's awesome. So there was a motion. And that's good. Thank you. And Mr. Callahan seconded to approve the consent agenda items. I'm sorry. Who is that? No, okay, sorry. Those in favor? Anyone opposed? Abstention or recusal? None? Okay, that was good unanimous vote. And now we go on to consent agenda item A minutes, executive session.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve A1, the executive session minutes of March 23, 2021, approval of executive session minutes of March 9, 2021, minutes not sealed.
There's a motion and Mr. Callahan seconded. Any discussion? I don't think we need to do that. So move on to a vote. Those in favor of approving the executive session minutes? Thank you. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Ms. Chambers was abstaining. Thank you. Any recusals? No. Okay, so one abstention.
Chair, point of order.
I'm sorry, what did I do wrong?
No, I'm just saying that when items are polled, there is an opportunity for discussion. They're for discussion. Yeah, there is.
Thank you. I'm sorry. That's why they're polled. Yep, I, you're, okay. I'm sorry. Was there, I rushed the vote. Was there any discussion on those exec, on those items? Okay, thank you. Thanks for that clarification, Mr. Callahan. Okay, so, Mr. Luzon?
Yep, Madam Chair, make a motion to approve A2, regular session minutes of March 23, 2021.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve the minutes of March 23, 2021, a second by Mr. Callahan. This is open for discussion. Anyone, Mr. Mr. Stahl, do you have your hand raised? With regard to the minutes?
Yeah. Okay, yeah, thank you, Chair. I appreciate Ryan make clarifying. We could have discussion on these because I simply wanted to say on this, there was a lot of discussion at that meeting. And to be able to read the minutes and have the minutes really encapsulate the discussion well is really good and really helpful. I don't want to overlook that when someone does a good job taking minutes and taking notes, it's a thankless job and a difficult one. I appreciate it, Donna. So thank you for the good minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Stahl. We, she's, he is, yes, a person that does an awesome job. Appreciate all our, all our efforts and work. So any more discussion on the March 23, 2021 minutes? No, those in favor approving the minutes? And any abstentions? I don't see any abstentions, Donna. Any recusals? Okay. Okay, that is minutes. So now we're on to reports, Ms. Picard.
So there was one subcommittee since the last school committee meeting, which is the anti-racism task force that took place on April 7. And enclosed, you received the approved minutes from the meeting on March 3. And the video from the April 7 meeting has been posted to the website as well, if you're interested in that review. For the, my additional reports for the kindergarten enrollment update right now, which is all e-registration and also paper if they chose. Right now, only five families have chosen to use paper. We have 10 families at Ashaway, 15 Hope Valley, 34 at Charleston, and 39 at Richmond pre-registered, not have completed their application. So right now, the schools are reaching out to families to ensure that they complete all of the documentation and the registration so that we can have a final submission. But overall, it looks to be around with our pre-K enrollment moving forward and expected to come back, as well as our pre-registrations, were about 98 kindergarten total for the district to date. And then as far as we have for the quarter four enrollment, we received the updated bus guidance, which allowed all of our families in middle school and high school who needed transportation. We actually only needed them to go to about 65% and they moved 75%. So that was a huge move for us and able to be provide that transportation. So that was great. So that means everyone that wanted to be in person and needed transportation did, was able to receive it to be able to come back on April 26. And then on the spring events update, we received word from the governor on Thursday that we are moving forward with prom, senior prom graduation at the time. Mr. McKenzie and I have already started talking that through. He was meeting with the senior group this, this evening, if not already this afternoon, to be able to sort of think through some choices for moving that work forward. And we, I will have more updates at the May meeting regarding graduation and prom now that we actually can plan. And myself, Mr. McKenzie, and a few of the elementary principals will be joining the work group at the state tomorrow for the spring events updates for any school, pre-K through 12. Okay, so coming events, April 13, we have our grade 11 SAT, April 15, grade 10 PSAT. April 15, Ashaway School Visioning Screening begins at 9:00 a.m. And April 16, we end our secondary end of grading period. That means quarter three is ending. April 19 starts our spring breaks. We have no school next week. April 27 and May 5, our high school glass fusing workshop and students and staff are invited to RSVP if interested, 2:30 to 4:45. The middle school on May 5 has their PTO meeting at 7:00 p.m. And on May 10, Richmond School Improvement Team meeting would be virtual at 5:30 p.m.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Picard. Now we're on to item 11, which is school committee requests for future agenda items or legal opinions. Let's see, we have Mr. Luzon, Ms. Chambers, and Mr. Abbott to start with, and then Mr. Stahl. Thank you all for raising your hand, Mr. Luzon.
Okay. First of all, Gina, thank you very much for doing this letter. I really, really, really appreciate it. If everybody reads it, the key word, words here are intent of legislation. And if you add up what we lose out, projected to lose out every year, if you do it for four years, you know, that's over a million dollars. We would lose out in transportation revenue from the state of Rhode Island. And so, yeah, could you, at the next meeting or at a future meeting, do a quick presentation on this? Because not only are you showing this to us, but I think the public should also hear about this repeatedly as often as possible, just to, so people understand the fight we have to, the dog and pony show we go through every single year in relationship to our trans, what the state promised us.
Okay, so presentation of, like historical kind of viewpoint, Mr.?
No, no, just, just, I just want the taxpayers to know what we, and we lose out on transportation funding.
Thank you very much. Okay, gotcha. Thank you very much. Let's see, Donna, Mr. Abbott, and then Mr. Stahl. Donna?
Yes, I have two requests. And the first being in light of what we heard this evening, I was, I think, the sole vote to not take yoga out of the curriculum, either the language or the the practice of it. I would like to.
I believe I voted against it also.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, George. Yes.
That's okay.
But anyway, anyway.
Thank you.
In light of what we learned this evening, I would like to go back and readdress not just the language, but the practice and learn more about exactly how it fits into the curriculum. So I would like to see that, both the yoga and I think the ladies this evening mentioned mindfulness. I don't know if you want to even consider meditation, but mindfulness and yoga and how it fits into the PE curriculum and the well-being of our children. That's number one. The second item that I would like to recommend is I would like, and at some point, it doesn't have to be next meeting, I'd like to recommend a review of our code of conduct.
Okay. The school committee's code of conduct.
The school committee's code of conduct. Us personally, and maybe even looking at some other districts and what they do. I think we need a review of that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Abbott and then Mr. Stahl. Mr. Abbott?
I'd like a presentation or interpretation by the administration of their understanding of the word stakeholder as it relates to our policy, procedures, and everyday operations.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Abbott. Mr. Stahl?
I'd like us to put on the agenda to renew or have again the conversation about meeting in person.
Okay.
Committee. You know, we're opening things up. We're having graduations and proms and activities. Doesn't mean there can't be a hybrid still and the online options, but getting the school committee back together in person for meetings.
Okay, so, thank you. I think that would be nice, too. Okay, so we have, thank you all for participating and giving me, and giving us those future agenda items.
Dan, no other hands, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I make a motion to adjourn.
There's been a motion to adjourn. There's been a second by Mr. Callahan. Those in favor of adjourning?
And guess, guess who won, Donna?
Okay, everybody's saying yes. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you all for a great meeting.
Thank you.